Good afternoon, we about to start. Good evening, I am Councilman Robert Stokes, Chair of Chairman of Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee. First, I'd like to introduce the members of this committee, Councilman Bullock from the 9th District, Councilman Zeke Corr from the 1st District, Vice President Sharon Miller from the 6th District. We have Tiffany Macklin from President Mosby's office online. We have Dwayne Adams from President Mosby's office. We have Dominic Legali from the Mayor's Office. And we have the committee's staff person here, Trey Hayes, Councilman Torrance from the 7th District. Before we start, I just have some opening remarks. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here this afternoon. The backbone of this city future lies in the hands of our young students. As stewards of the future, it's our responsibility to comprehend every mechanism that affects their education. The committee welcomes representatives from the Baltimore City School Board to enlighten the council on member responsibility and reporting practices. After this hearing, the committee anticipates having a better understanding of the structure of our school board, ensuring transparency, effectiveness, and ensuring our students are receiving the best education possible. So, we're gonna start, and the Chair of the Baltimore School Commissioner, Mr. Ronald McFadden, will be doing a PowerPoint presentation.
Is it, so it's red for you, okay. For us, it's green. So, thank you, Madam Vice President. And to the council, thank you all for scheduling this with us, making sure that we have this time. I know, Councilman Stokes, you've been wanting this to happen for quite some time. So, we're eager to continue a partnership with the city council as we focus on doing our absolute best work for children in our city. So, good evening to you. I'm Ronald McFadden, the Chair of the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners. With me today, and who will share the presenting, is our school board's Vice Chair, Ms. Chantel Roberts. Tonight, we also have Commissioner Mohammed, who is here with us, and Commissioner Eblaki, who serves as our student representative on the Board of School Commissioners. And we also have members of our Board Office Team and Staff, as you all, I'm sure, know, Dewana Asturet, who's our Legislative Director, in addition to our Board Executive Officer, Dr. Jennifer Jenkins, who is with us this evening. Those that are not present had other obligations. So, I know you requested the full Board, but as many as possible here, we're here, still to be with you all tonight. This evening, we will have a short PowerPoint that we hope will clear up some information about who we are, and the role and the structure of the Board of School Commissioners in response to City Council Bill 23-01164R. 0164R. So, here we see the members of the school board listed here. Two positions are vacant, and we're looking forward to filling those vacancies. The Board is comprised of unpaid volunteers that have a passion for education and a passion for our children that reside here in Baltimore City. So, we are comprised of 12 individuals, currently 10, but we're looking for two more, and that process is handled by the Mayor's Office. Two elected from a citywide vote, which occurs every four years, and those two elected members are Commissioner Kwame Kenyatta Bay, in addition to Commissioner Ashley Esposito. And soon, we'll have a student representative who is elected from their peers. We expanded that process this past year to ensure that more students and more young people are able to participate in that process. And so, that process is actually underway right now. This slide provides that breakdown of the expertise that is on the Board. So, unlike many other school boards that exist throughout our state and throughout our country, our Board by law has to have certain members included. Four commissioners appointed with expertise in operating a successful business. We have to have three commissioners appointed with a high level of knowledge and expertise concerning education. One commissioner must be a parent, at least one. However, we have three commissioners on our school board who are parents of students within city schools. And one, at least one commissioner, appointed with knowledge or experience in educating children with a disability. And it can be a parent of a child that receives special education services, and we have several parents on our Board that fit that mode. As an aside of the current school board members, we just mentioned, three have students currently enrolled. Three also have been teachers within Baltimore City Public Schools, including myself. I spent quite some time teaching at Booker T. Washington Middle School. I think it's one of the greatest places that exists in our city, for multiple reasons. But, of course, we cannot be employees of the school system. So, many of the folks that are teachers or were teachers no longer teach within the system, because certainly there's a conflict there of interest. But, we do have two, one active teacher, and then, of course, I'm a school administrator. Again, we are unpaid volunteers who have legally been tasked with raising the academic achievement of our students and improving the management and administration of the school system. I'm gonna turn the next couple of slides over to our brilliant Vice Chair.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having us tonight. So, for the school board, the law requires that the appointed members are selected by the mayor. The mayor appoints them based upon the recommendations of the community panel. The slides list those organizations that currently make up the community panel. The meetings are organized and arranged by the Mayor's Office of Children, Children Family Success, and are open to the public. The mayor does have the authority to expand the community panel, and we understand that CCAC, and there's been an intentional effort to have representation from multi, a multilanguage learner representative included in our next round of interviews. For our next slide, this details our key duties of the Board of School Commissioners. First and foremost, we are directly accountable to our parents and students. To be accountable, we have a strategic planning committee amongst the board that collaborates to set the vision, mission, and strategic priorities and goals for the district. We set and approve the legislative agenda each year. While the board sets the vision, mission, and strategic goals, the CEO manages the day-to-day operations for the school system. Therefore, the board hires and evaluates the CEO based on the goals that the board deems necessary and important. The board also reviews and approves the annual budget, school board budget, but only after hearing from all stakeholders, inclusive of parents, students, principals, elected officials, and others, as to what they deem necessary and important. And finally, we also review and approve the portfolio of schools. This would include building, renovating, opening, and merging, and sometimes, closing of schools. I'll now hand it back over to Chair McFadden.
Thank you, Vice Chair Roberts. I also would be remiss if I didn't introduce other members of our team here, Ms. LaShawna Williams and Ms. Sherri Christian, who support the board and the whole school system, as we look to reimagine what we look like as far as communications and PR and all of that is concerned. So, they work very hard with the Board Office Team and with city schools. So, I just wanted to make sure you all were aware of those staff members as well. Slide nine focuses on the vision, the mission, and the strategic priorities of our board. And so, what the board underwent for several months, I would say even more than that, it was longer than that. We looked at where we were, we looked at pandemic information, we looked at what was needed post-pandemic, and the board engaged in a community stakeholder process of engagement as it relates to developing these strategic goals and priorities for the district now that are driving the work of Baltimore City Schools. And so, we're directly accountable to our parents and students, as our Vice Chair mentioned. And she also mentioned that Strategic Planning Committee that reviews all of the information, that reviews data, that reviews multiple data sources, metrics, to ensure that we are focusing on student needs and developing an appropriate path forward towards raising academic achievement and providing appropriate learning environments. Slide 10 shows the broad district goals that we have, and the most, and that the CEO must meet. And so, there are four. We specifically, this past summer, adopted a goal for mathematics, because as we had conversations with parents, with multiple stakeholder groups, we initially had a goal for wholeness, we had one for literacy, which certainly means that our children are able to read, write, and speak about multiple content areas, and a graduation rate increase. But, parents and family members, guardians, stakeholders overwhelmingly talked to us about having a goal for mathematics as well. And so, we took that into consideration, worked with the Strategic Planning Committee, multiple members of staff, external stakeholders, inclusive of the Council of Great City Schools, to kind of help us figure out where we should be moving toward as it relates to mathematics. So, these are the four goals that are driving our work. And each year, the CEO is required to meet some benchmarks as we get to our overarching, our targets. This slide is a depiction of the reporting structure with students, parents, and families. Our students are always at the top. Students are always the foundation of all of what we do. And as I say to folks often, Council Chair Stokes, that our young people don't have a union to fight for them. The board, we're supposed to be that for them, and so, they are at the foundation of all of what we do. Then, we see the Board of School Commissioners. We set mission, policy, vision, and goals to meet needs. And then, we allow the CEO, the Chief Executive Officer, to manage the day-to-day operation of the school system, moving us closer to our goals. Board members that are elected in the citywide vote receive a four-year term and can be voted out at the next election cycle, but also can be removed for causes such as immorality, this goes for all board members, misconduct, incompetency, and willful neglect of duty. Appointed members serve three-year terms, but no more than two full three-year terms, and serve at the pleasure of the mayor, and can be removed for the causes that were just mentioned, in addition to failure to attend at least half of the scheduled board meetings. And finally, we want to let the committee know that the board interacts with members of our community regularly to receive feedback. So, you can see on the screen that we host family and community forums periodically throughout the school year, in addition to a host of other meetings. What I also will mention is that because we are not, unlike other school systems, unlike many of you who represent specific districts in the city, our two elected members are elected at large, of course. And so, it was a focus of the board to make sure, within our school system, we have what is called CLNs, or Community Learning Networks. And our board has adopted a network. So, each committee has a network that they're responsible for, to better interact, to better meet the needs of the different communities that are represented within city schools, to make sure that we're touching the entire city, even though we're appointed and elected at large. We just had a forum at Cherry Hill Elementary Middle School on October 18th, and several others will be occurring over the course of this school year. The next slide depicts standard board meetings that occur the second and fourth Tuesday of each month, where we not only have presentations by school system staff, and we conduct the business of the school district, but public comment is provided by recognized groups, such as the Baltimore Teachers Union, PZAZA, which is our administrators, our principals, and other central office staff, ASCBC, which is the Associated Student Congress of Baltimore City, Cub, and others. We also have set aside time for the public to speak. We allow three minutes for each speaker, and there are 10 speakers during those public meetings. Speakers can be in-person, they can be virtual, or their statements can be read in that meeting. And then, we do have a great office team and staff that follows up with any requests that are made by members of the public often. We also have public committee meetings that are virtual, and each allows for public comment. Our standing committees currently serve as the Operations Committee, the third Tuesday of each month, the Teaching and Learning Committee, which meets on the first Tuesday of each month, and the Policy Committee, which meets on the third Tuesday. You also heard about our Strategic Planning Committee. And in response to a lot that has been happening within our city, and ultimately, in our schools, because certainly, we know that our schools are microcosms of what is happening in the communities around them. And we created what is called now the Safety and Wholeness Committee, which meets on an as-need basis, and Commissioner Mohammed is leading that particular committee. This committee was established in the wake of concerns that we hear and share with our students and families about the safety and the mental health of our students and staff during these very tumultuous times. Before we conclude, I think we mentioned our Board Office Team, but we have additional commissioners that have joined us. Commissioner Kalila Slater Harrington, who is with us, and we also have, who is the Chair of our Teaching and Learning Committee. And we have Commissioner Robert Sally, who is leading our strategic planning work, and also supports us in legislative affairs with Dewana Asturet, and on the Maryland Association of Boards of Education. We hope this brief overview has provided some more broad information for the committee, and we're here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chair McFadden. I'd like to recognize Melissa Broom from the CEO's office that's on the line also. Before we start... One moment. Thank you. I'm gonna start off, not with my questions yet. I'm gonna start off with Councilman Corr, Corr, please.
Thank you, Chairman Stokes, and apologies, I'm gonna have to leave at 5:30. I chair the city's trauma-informed care task force, and will have to jump upstairs online to that. So, sorry for heading out early, and thank you to the chairman for indulging. Thank you also to the School Board of Commissioners for being here. Really appreciate you all showing up, and showing up consistently for our kids, our teachers, our parents, and our entire school communities. I will say, I do believe, I think, just one thing I caught, that I do believe we do have a student union in the city of Baltimore, which is, I believe, led by this young man over here. And I think, one of the things that's always been important to this council, and I know to the School Board of Commissioners as well, is that student voice is fully recognized. And so, did want to just shout out Ethan, who's here with us today. Quick question for you all. I am interested, you know, I think there is a lot of conversation, obviously, that you all have, that we have, that constituents have, about violence impacting our kids. And knowing that young people are particularly vulnerable, knowing that when it comes to issues around physical and mental health safety, that we've seen just a large uptick, unfortunately, in violence and crime impacting kids. I'm curious, just from the board's perspective, from a policy perspective, you mentioned the committee that's been formed, and really glad to hear that. Have there been any specific policy recommendations related to student safety, school safety, coming from the school board? And what are those?
So, we're working on that, which is one of the reasons why we've developed the committee, to kind of reimagine our work and to align the work that's happening, both in academics and operations, to make sure that we have a more streamlined focus on policy implications as it relates to safety and wholeness. Know that we have a wellness policy, and we have a wholeness policy, but we're looking more intently, because what we, what we do know is that what impacts our young people every day is not always what is going on inside the school buildings. It typically is what's happening around the school buildings that we can't always control. But, to your point, we can look a little bit more deeply, which is why we're doing that now, and making sure we have a focused group to make informed decisions as it relates to policy for the school system.
I appreciate that.
And also, Councilman, please, I want to go back to Commissioner Eblaki, who's done a great job, not just with the union that is newly established, but also with our student having expanded voting rights. He's done a lot of that work. So, you're right, we just haven't had a student union in a, as regularly as we've had the others. But, he is a brilliant person that we certainly appreciate being on our board.
I appreciate that. I'm curious, just again, from the board's perspective, you know, there was a commitment a couple of years back, under a previous board, around the district becoming a restorative practices district. And I think we've seen some really good work in the restorative practices space. And I think it's been a little bit fits and starts, right? Like, the effort has been strong in some schools, and less strong, and less funded in others. I'm curious if there is a stance that this board has taken specifically around restorative practices. I know that the council voted on a resolution a little while back, in support of us, again, becoming a restorative district. And so, I'm curious, you know, as this committee is doing its work, I don't want to jump ahead of them, but where are we, as a board, as a district, on sort of scaling restorative practices in our schools?
Most of our schools actually implement restorative practices. And so, it's certainly something that the committee will take back to look deeper into. We also know that all of our school communities are not the same, right? And so, what may work in one school community may not necessarily need to work in another school community, in a district like ours, as large as ours. But, hopefully, Councilman, you'll be able to partner with our committee, the Safety and Wholeness Committee, to better inform how we can, as a board, inform policy decisions that allow that day-to-day operation to happen that the CEO will oversee.
Yeah. And, Mr. Chairman, I would love that. And I would just offer, and again, it's apropos, because I'm about to run off to it, but I think that the city's trauma-informed care task force is also very interested in partnering on this work, that's sort of in the in-between space. To your point, we know that what happens in community impacts what happens to our kids in school, and then, what happens to them in school impacts what then goes on outside of the school building, back in community. And so, would absolutely take up that invitation, and would love to follow up with you after the hearing about how, you know, the council, the task force, and others, we can just be a little more intentional in partnering, because I think there's good work happening. And I just, I feel like we're a city where often, work can happen in silos or in vacuums, and just want to
I agree.
create those connection points as, as much as possible.
And, and I'm a very collaborative leader, right? And so, I would, I welcome that conversation, but I also want to make sure that Commissioner Mohammed, because we are a team as a board, and that is his wheelhouse, and that is what he has been charged to do. And so, hopefully, in the spirit of partnership, you'll be able to connect with Commissioner Mohammed, so that we can really move that forward. Because what I do believe is, the board has all of this expertise, but it has to be focused in a way that really allows for our data to move, and our student achievement to move, but also that our students are whole, our children are whole, and their families are whole as well. So, Commissioner Mohammed is ready and willing to move forward with you in that way.
That would be great. I will send you both an email after this hearing. Again, thank you to the chairman for letting me go first, and apologies to everyone for me having to run off, but thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just have, my first question is gonna be about learning and achievement. In alignment with the board's responsibility to maintain a uniform system of public schools that provides quality and equitable educational opportunities, how does the board plan to identify, address, and monitor learning and achievement gaps that have become more apparent, especially after the pandemic?
Absolutely. And certainly, as an educator, we're seeing the impact of students not being in school in ways that they were prior to 2020 and 2021. And so, we've established these strategic goals and priorities. And as you all just saw, there are four specific goals that are certainly driven by data, right? We're looking at how students are performing, not just on standardized assessments, but multiple sources of data to make informed decisions, to not just raise the achievement, fill some of the gaps, but looking at long-term trajectory is where we want our students to be. Certainly, we want our, we want all of our students to graduate on time. But, we also want to make sure that students can read, right? Conjugate verbs, multiply, add, subtract, be able to manage and deal with money, which is why we're looking at financial literacy options to be placed into our curriculum. But, what I will say is that our Teaching and Learning Committee is very focused on receiving information and asking tough questions, to make sure that we are staying on track and focused on these four specific goals that we've outlined with multiple stakeholders, to make sure that we're moving the needle forward.
Thank you, Chairman. Now, the question that I'm asking, I will give you a copy of them. Can you just respond back to my email?
Absolutely.
I know Councilman Corr talked about the violence in schools, the safe environment, and like the boards commit to fostering safe learning environments. How is the board, because I'm gonna go a little deeper, how is the board addressing, adapting its strategies to ensure heightened safety measures, especially considering recent incidents involving shootings that affected our student community?
The board is currently looking at the purchasing of different enhancements to our buildings. So, as we all know, right, Baltimore City has the oldest portfolio of buildings in the entire state of Maryland. That's pretty sad. And so, we're doing our best to work to improve the conditions of our facilities, to make sure that they're up to date, so that we can keep our, our children, and our staff members, and everyone who's in those, those buildings, safe. There was some information that was brought to the board a couple of weeks ago, as it relates to some potential items that we're planning on purchasing, starting with our high schools, to try to make those, those schools and those buildings safer. But, what we have heard from our students is that they don't necessarily feel unsafe when they're in school. It's their travel to school. In a district that is a choice district, where our students are able, and our families are able to choose the best program option for their child, that may mean that a child is traveling from Cherry Hill to go to Baltimore Polytechnic Institute, or living near Forest Park, traveling to Baltimore City College, or to Western, or to wherever. And so, what we're doing is our best to collaborate with multiple agencies outside of city schools to kind of help with that. But, the board is looking to make some different types of investments to ensure that our facilities are in better condition. But, we also are focusing that work in our Safety and Wholeness Committee in a more intentional way, in a more intentional way.
So, are there collaborations with law enforcement or community stakeholders in place, in place to mitigate these risks? Because a lot of times, the violence happen in communities, your school is sitting right where communities, where there's violence at. Have y'all formed any partnerships with the community in terms of addressing it?
We have, Chair Stokes. And what I will say is that toward the end of last year, the board hosted a forum that was specifically geared toward safety and wholeness, where the Mayor's Office, MONC, was in attendance, shared a ton of data in collaboration with our school staff, to make sure that we were able to disaggregate some of the incidents, a lot of the things that were occurring outside of the building, to kind of were occurring outside of the building, to kind of help inform how we move forward. One of those ways of moving forward is creating a specific board committee as a governing body and a policymaking body to kind of inform the work that's happening within city schools to ensure that our schools are safe. What I will also say, again, is that we're in Charm City, so all of our communities are not the same. And so, there may be an act of violence or something that happens in one community that may not be impacted or may not impact another community. And so, we've got to take a broad lens as to how we partner with agencies, but we welcome the partnership. We actually had, in conjunction with the mayor as well, a group where we came together, I believe, city council was invited, different legislators were invited, city schools, chief staff members, the board was fully present at that particular meeting where we started to discuss what we would do on an ongoing basis. Again, we still sit in a place of being ready and available to work and collaborate, but as I'm sure you are aware, sometimes it becomes a challenge to pull all as many agencies together. We hope it happens, but it's another reason why we can't wait, and we put together a committee to kind of focus on what is happening as far as safety and wholeness more intently.
Okay, my last one, you know, we talk about board's accountability. With the board's stated responsibilities, including being held accountable for each student's academic achievement and establishing relationships with stakeholders, how does the board plan to ensure transparency in actions and decisions?
So, transparency as it relates to, can you clarify, just illuminate that a little bit more for me?
Their academic achievement and relationships, their academic treatment by itself. So, how does the board plan to ensure transparency in your actions and decisions?
All of our meetings are public, right? All of the information that we discuss, data, our plans to move forward, our interactions with staff, and what our expectations are to make sure that we meet our goals, all of that is, that happens in the public space. What I will also say is as we are becoming a bit more focused in the way that the board evaluates itself aligned with the council of great city schools, there's a model in addition to the work that's happening and strategic planning. The board is monitoring our own goals, so we're looking at how we're working and how we're meeting our goals as we expect the CEO to direct staff and to work with staff to meet his goals. All of that happens in public. And of course, we do have to have some collaboration that may not be televised or recorded, but there's never a moment where the board is hiding things from the public. We want to make sure that we are as transparent as possible because we're accountable to our children and their families and the communities in which they live.
Well, how do the board measure its success in showing that the highest level of academic achievement across city schools?
So, we have board goals, and we included those. There is baseline information that we can provide as it relates to where we start post-pandemic and where we want to go as a school system. So, I'll just refer us back to our goals, the goals that we've established with members of the community, multiple stakeholders. We're not happy where our students are performing, but at the same time, we are noticing some growth in many areas, like in literacy, as it relates on standardized assessments. We're not happy about where we are, but certainly, we want to continue to work in partnership with multiple stakeholders to drive the achievement even higher because our kids are the most brilliant here in Baltimore City.
Thank you, Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Chair Stokes, and thank you, Chair McFadden. You'd mentioned building conditions, and it made me think about the school closure process, which we know can be very challenging, not only for communities, but also a decision that you guys don't take lightly. I know part of it is around the student population in buildings, some of it's around the building conditions. Can you give us a little insight into sort of the decision-making process that you guys go through and how you engage community and stakeholders in that heavy decision-making?
Sure. So, a part of the city-state partnership that not just the board was a part of, as I'm sure you all are aware, there were multiple agencies, legislators, that were involved in that agreement, where we have to surplus buildings back over to the city because they're in poor condition. And so, we have an Office of New Initiatives that is headed by Ms. Angela Alvarez, who does a significant amount of work in engaging schools, engaging school communities, working with state agencies, working with different community organizations and associations, and being data-driven in the recommendations that they bring to the board. When there is a recommendation to potentially end a particular building program, as you mentioned, we don't take that lightly, and it's nothing that we want to do, right? We don't want to disrupt what is happening in communities, but some of our buildings are sitting on top of sewage, right? And that sewage is coming into, I remember a few years ago, we had a building like that that just was not in the condition for our young people to be. And so, we have to find ways to keep some of the spirit of that community in any new decision that we make as to where students and families will be moving to. Did I answer what you were asking?
No, you did. You know, I just wanted to get a little bit more insight into, you know, how you guys wrestle with that process. And then, on top of that, just thinking about the interactions with community members and then what you may see in the future regarding this process, because we know that there are some other challenges that we're dealing with.
Yes. And so, what I will also mention is that the board is very specific now because we have, we have a vast portfolio of schools. And so, we're looking at programs that enhance where we currently are, that support the communities that currently exist. And yes, working directly with community members, community organizations, even when we're renaming school programs, we actually survey our young people, we survey families to get their buy-in as to how they choose to identify in their new space. We have our Office of New Initiatives that works directly with communities, especially when we're bringing different communities together. As I'm sure you can imagine, that can be a challenging thing to bring differences from multiple cultural backgrounds and all of that together into the same space. So, we have a team that works directly with school leaders and with community organizations, associations, and members that drive that work for us. So, we don't solely make the decision, we actually ensure that there is community buy-in, representation, and all of that. And then, with us also being responsible for particular networks, commissioners are directly involved in that work as well.
Yeah, and thank you for providing that clarity. I think that's important to talk about, one, the recommendations and how you process that. One, follow-up in terms of recommendations and then decision-making, the charter renewal process, right? So, again, there's data that's involved with that, there are multiple years that can be given. Just for the edification of the public, can you talk a little bit about how that process unfolds?
Sure. The school board awards a charter to any program that says that they can do, you know, work better than city schools, which ultimately means charter schools should be outperforming our traditional schools. Every charter school should, and that's the goal of having a charter school. We want you to not just meet the standard, right? We want you to exceed it because that is the goal of a charter. And so, when it is time for charters to come up for renewal, the board takes a very thorough approach in looking at attendance, looking at retention rates, looking at a school's financial state, right? Can a school actually support the operation of that, not just right now, but also in the years to come? And so, there's a whole process where we're looking at multiple data sources, and we've actually just implemented what is called the Five Essentials. I can get more of that information to you, and it's certainly on our website, where we're looking at a more holistic approach to student achievement and growth. So, there are several determining factors that go into whether a school receives a renewal. Maybe it's a three-year renewal, maybe it's a five-year renewal, which is often rare because we really, the goal of a charter is to raise the achievement by outperforming schools that already exist. So, if we have a school, a charter, that is performing like some of our schools that are maybe below average, it is not advantageous for us, ideally, to continue. But at the same time, we bring in members of the community, right? The board decides however the board decides. And I say that because the board is made up of different perspectives, right? We don't always agree, but there are tough decisions that have to be made. We don't just do it based on the data that is presented, but we also give members of those particular school communities to come forth, share their perspectives, their expertise, their knowledge of the school communities, and we take all of that into consideration when we're making decisions for charter renewals.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Council Vice President Middleton?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just, first of all, sitting here, listening to the questions and listening to you, and I, I'm really feeling good energy, new vibes. I can really feel and tell that the school board is also changing and trying to really meet the goals and get exposure. I'm really excited about the community engagements that I think you started last year and you're continuing those. I think it's important that the school board having exposure, so you're giving an education to the citizens of Baltimore City. So, to me, that's showing that you are listening to people, your parents, you're really showing that you are a part of them and you want to listen to them, to make strong, informed decisions about the school, not just the school system, but each and every student in that school.
Each child, yes, ma'am.
Yes. And I'm feeling those vibes, and those are feelings that I haven't felt in a long time personally with the school system. So, I thank you for that, and I also, you know, a number of people do not know that the school, you're all volunteers.
All of us are volunteers. Even the elected members are not paid.
And that's a question right there because the two elected members, you know, they have to raise money, they have to, it's a whole different way of what you have to do to get on that board, and it shows that commitment right there. So, hopefully, down the road, the work that you do will show that at some point, there needs to be, you need to be a paid board, you know? You do hard work and make very good, informed decisions about the students in our school. And I did have a question, but you answered it, and right within this committee, I do have a bill waiting for the right time to bring it out, and that's on, again, that's on financial literacy. And that has been something close and dear to me. I think that the city school system and educating our children for financial literacy, we're just so behind, especially when I see counties like Prince George's County-
Sure.
-somehow donated or gathered like $60 million and have a whole team of teachers that actually teach that curriculum to their high school students, 11th, 12th graders, they get a credit. That was something that I remember in the school system, in all of the school systems. It was almost like a requirement that there was a financial literacy class, and I think that that is just so, a very important thing needed for our Baltimore City school systems. We have students that they don't even know what a bank is. They, you know, at a young age, you're supposed to start a savings account. All that is a part of forming into an understanding budgeting and all those things. And we have parents that don't have time to teach that. They used to do it in home economics or family study programs, and we just don't have it. And we have gang organizations that, you know, they grasp or grab children just, you know, on little, small things like that. So, when you had mentioned you're going to have a curriculum or a class, I don't know if you have more information about that now, that, I'll let you talk.
Sure, so, yes, absolutely. And what I will say, yes, it can be more lucrative, right, to a child who is attempting to make ends meet. You know that we have more concentrated poverty in our area, in this city, than most other jurisdictions, for sure, right? If I can make a little money in the trap house, right? And ultimately, maybe even commit a crime, right? We then have to, as a school system, educate, but at the same time, we know that we can't solve all of the ills within the community because that becomes a challenge, right? Food deserts, that's a real thing that we can't control. Social services are things that we can't always control as a school system. But we do have financial literacy components embedded into our curriculum. It is not standalone. So, what I will say, Vice President Middleton, is that the board actually grapples with that. The board actually is thinking about, like, do we want to create a credit-earning course in financial literacy? Do we have the capacity to do that? Our vice chair actually works in job force work development for young people. And so, it's something that is very near and dear to her. It is not absent within city schools' curriculum, it is present, but it is just not necessarily a standalone course at the moment. But I hear you, and the board is also listening because it's something that the board has been grappling with, at least for the past two years. So, if we can partner with any way with you, Vice President Middleton, we would love to do that, to better inform the work as we move forward. We also have partnerships with Junior Achievement, where our, excuse me, our young people are able to actually go. If, I'm not sure if you're familiar with Junior Achievement?
Yes.
Yep. So, we have that program that is a part of what schools are able to do at the earlier stages, like fifth and, I think, eighth grade. But we are looking into how can we more intentionally offer financial literacy at the higher school level? Can we afford it? Because that takes staffing, that takes resources. It is a need, but we've got to be strategic about how we do that.
I guess one suggestion would be to maybe pilot it, one course-credited, you know, session, some kind of way, for 11th or 12th graders at a particular school, a CTE school, you know? I think it would be good to at least, you know, try it somewhere and see how successful it, you know, it could be. But I'm glad you're looking into that. And then, lastly, Mr. Chair, I know that the city is also, you know, we all on this council support apprenticeships, the mayor supports apprenticeships, he's starting some really good ones in health, at least six or seven agencies. And I think it's a good time for, you know, the school system to jump on board and connect with those agencies that, you know, are supported right now with, you know, within each agency.
So, and I appreciate that. One thing I will say, one of the reasons why we actually have been reimagining what criteria entrance looks like at some of our schools, like a MIRVO with very robust CTE and pre-professional programs, is to increase access to our young people and being able to participate in training programs like that. We welcome the partnership. One thing that I will say, my Senator, Antonio Hayes, loves this, the Carver House. The Carver House is his thing, right? Because it's a partnership with Carver High School and multiple agencies where students are taking ownership of, reimagining what homes look like and making sure that they're energy efficient. They're actually working on those buildings. We actually just had a presentation the board did a couple of weeks ago around Carver House. So, they exist, and we're looking, you know, for ways to increase access for our young people in pre-professional programs, and we welcome that partnership. Commissioner Sater Harrington is the chair of our Teaching and Learning Committee, and I'm sure she'll welcome meeting and figuring out ways to move forward. But I will say again, certainly not all of our, we need to offer it and we need to provide the access. All of our schools and all of our school communities are not the same, right? And so, we have to determine what is the best choice option in specific geographical locations? What can schools actually support at a school-based level? And then, how can we support other agencies outside? And then how can we support other agencies outside of city schools and making sure that our students not only are ready for college career, but they're ready for life?
Thank you for that. And I just want to end by saying you do have, I do know two school commissioners now personally that are on the commission, and that's Mr. Muhammad and Ms. Harrington, which are very experienced and very smart individuals that are involved in communities throughout the city. So their expertise in decision-making is going to be very valuable.
I agree. What I will also mention is community that you mentioned, Vice President, and we're working. So if you all have some ways to kind of support us in engaging with the community, we know that all of our families are not the same, right? And so we'll have a hearing, we'll have a forum. And as great as our communications team can be in advertising things and the ways that they know are right, based on data and analytics, we don't always get the greatest yield. Because what we know now, post-pandemic, is that technology is a huge resource that can allow folks to view the meeting tonight without actually being here. And so the way that we now engage families in the 21st century is evolving, but we've got to look at ways to partner with multiple stakeholders to really identify, how do parents and families want to be engaged? We see more families show up in areas like yours. When we were at Pemlico last year, and we saw more families at Edmondson West Side. But of course, when we had that particular forum, it was right on the heels of an act of violence, unfortunately. And so more people were involved in those moments. But we're looking to improve ways that we engage because that is a priority of ours. And I'm glad that you can kind of sense that energy. And like I will say, with any governing body, right? We won't always agree, but at the root and at the core of all we do, our kids are there, right? And so we've got to make decisions that are in their best interest and not always decisions that make us comfortable. And then finally, board being paid, there is a task force by law that has now been established to evaluate the compensation. What would that look like in Baltimore City? It has to be a change in law, right? So there is a task force that I believe the mayor's office is coordinating. We do have two representatives from the board that are on that task force as well, appointed to members to actually serve, to give their perspective. And I want to say both of the members are actually full-time, big time, right? They have big jobs, but they also have children in the system. And so I think it's important to have their perspective when we're talking about compensation because you're right, it's a lot, like tonight, right? We're invested in the community, which is why we're here. We live here in the city, and we want to see outcomes for our young people improve. So, you know, I won't unfortunately be around if the board does get paid, right? My time, I'll rotate off. But I think it is important for us to look at because almost every other jurisdiction compensates their board in some way.
Exactly. Well, thank you all for your service. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Torrance?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Chair and Madam Vice Chair.
And to our board.
And to our board members.
Thank you.
So my question is directly related as a follow-up to Councilman Bullock. We have, historically, the data for charter schools is hit or miss, right? Families love the concepts of the schools. Have we looked at, as a board, in legislation changing the charter law to keep the concept so that when we do close a school or end their program, we can keep the concept so families can stay at that school rather than moving on somewhere else? So while we as that entity may disappear, but if the district takes the building back over and program back over, how do we continue in that safety that families have been created in their actual environment?
So, and I'll let Dewana speak, but you're saying, so we then take on operating an additional school potentially? Or look at finding another operator potentially for the school with the same program?
Yeah, so my understanding from when at city schools, the operator's concept is proprietary by statute. So in order to move forward with it, we would have to change the statute where it becomes your intellectual property so that families can stay in the program. Case in point, Rosemont was a school in Councilman Bullock's district that then was taken over by city schools, but the young people and staffs remained. There were some concepts that city schools could not continue at that time because it was proprietary to the operator.
Dewana?
Dewana's Director of Legislative Government Affairs for, just for the record. Yes, I remember a couple of schools that the school system took over after charter operator either failed and/or something, the charter was taken away for various reasons. The proprietary from, that goes beyond education. That goes to business law, basically, you know? And the allowance, when they have a charter within their charter contract, that does become proprietary, and only unless they're willing to do that can another entity take it over. I don't think there would be, and I could be wrong, but I don't think there would be anyone that would force an entity to provide the proprietary information. I don't know of any instance where that would happen, but it's a thought. But what happens is we take some of the concepts to continue on, but not the actual day-to-day proprietary information that they had for teaching the kids.
I would like to explore that with you because there are ways that we can acquire it because they're being compensated for the actual proprietary information. So there's ways around it. I would like to explore it with the state in terms of it because they are essentially entering into contract vis-a-vis a third-party contract to educate our young people. If there are some things that we can keep, I think we should explore, especially if there's portions of the curriculum that we can use again for the young people.
And the question goes to the reason that the charter school failed. Was it because of the curriculum? Was it because of what was, how it was taught?
Or was management?
Or was it management? So.
Yeah.
What I will also mention is that the board is in the process of developing its legislative agenda and platform as we move to legislative session in Annapolis. And I think that could be something that we just think through, maybe if not offering in this particular session, maybe in one in the future.
Thank you. And my next question is related to a bit of governance. I know that the strategy around health and wellness in the district, what I find lagging and just as a general criticism is that there's lost opportunity in expanding our school-based health centers where we can help retain young people in buildings. And I have not seen significant movement from the administration on figuring out ways to make it, close that gap for primary healthcare. I say that because I live in a primary healthcare desert in West Baltimore where a number of my young people have to travel to east and further west Baltimore, north Baltimore, to receive primary care services. And as we all know, because of school choice, it may take hours to get to any destination in Baltimore City on that. So I would like to work with you guys as a legislative agenda about ways that we can explore for funding those centers because I know that you need federally qualified centers to actually sponsor them, but ways that we can use creatively through Medicaid and others to help pay for those and supplement the costs. That way it's not solely shifted on the city schools.
I appreciate that thought partnership because as we've been mentioning, of course, we cannot completely take on the ills of the entire society within our schools, but you're absolutely right. And what I will also say is that we have now taken on more costs for even school nurses now being in our schools, right? So we're incurring more costs. So that partnership for, you know, health centers being in our schools, especially some of our 21st century buildings that we are erecting, that could be an idea, but we would need support in that. And so thank you for that collaboration, and I know that we'll follow up to kind of see how that can work.
And just to add, the city health department, because they do the staffing and that they would have to buy into this, and also there would need to be some, there have to be, need to be some funding as well, as you mentioned.
Councilman, is there a request, and would you like to state what the request is?
So a request is a follow-up related to proprietary information for continuing concepts from charter school that is being no longer continued. I would say no longer continued, that's politically correct word. And then the other is, so let's just let you think about school-based health clinics and how we can get support from the state through either third-party billing or Medicaid to help defer the cost for city schools to actually expand in some of their centers.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I just have one mention that when we talk about violence in school or neighborhoods, have you ever thought about maybe when that happens in a neighborhood that we go knock on doors, how we get the community more involved, not just when violence happened, but when it happened? Are y'all knocking on doors so you can bring the community outside of their house and say, you need to be a part of the school itself? I know people working, but when you have violence in a neighborhood around a school, have y'all ever looked at knocking on those community doors and say, hey, we want you to be a part of it, not just when it happened, but when it do happen?
Sure. What I will say is that we do have a community engagement team that does focus on things like that. Not in every instance are they doing things as what you're referring to because each situation is different. We do want, we welcome all of our partners, right? That's how we're looking for the CEO to develop school leaders, right? Because right now, principals are being asked to do an enormous amount of work, right? Beyond just making sure that students are able to read, write, and add and subtract. They're managing, you know, more money in a fair student funding district. They're managing staff. But we do have community school coordinators because the majority of our schools are community schools. And so, yes, that is some of their responsibility. And what I will also say, shout out to Roger Shaw, who works in city schools with our re-engagement center. There has not been a time that has gone by when I've been in a various community within our city and someone has mentioned that they cannot, that a child is committing acts of violence, you know, they're not showing up at school. Hey, Mr. Shaw, how you doing? I need, I have a student's name, I give it to Shaw, and he follows right up with that student, re-engages them. So we do have a re-engagement center, but what it sounds like you're saying is how do we get the community more involved into what happens in our schools every day? We do have community school coordinators, and if you have more ideas, right? We welcome them so that we can kind of make sure that staff hears them and can incorporate them into the larger plan of wholeness.
I will reach out to Roger Shaw. I'm looking at the sign in this. We don't have no one that signed up to testify. Those in attendance, virtually, please raise your hand so we can identify you to speak. Is there anyone online that would like to speak? Okay, we have no one that's virtually would like to speak. I also want to recognize Tiffany Macklin. She was virtually, she actually in person now. Thank you, Tiffany. If there's, if there's anyone else who would like to testify but did not sign up in advance, I guess that's nobody. Just conclude, just conclude the public testimony, but before we take the vote, I want to thank you guys for coming here. I don't know if this is the first time that you've ever been invited to the council just to talk about what you're doing in the school system.
This board, this current iteration of the board, yes.
So even though we're going to vote it out, I would like to have, this council would like to have a partnership so you can come back and get updated, and I don't always have to have a hearing and say, come before the council. I want to make sure we have a partnership, the council, with the school board commissioners. And when they ready to come back to update the council and the community, then I'll be looking forward from an email from you, Chair McFadden.
And Chair Stokes, if I may, just a couple of things that are coming up. We are currently, of course, in budget development season for FY '25. FY '25. And so each school, and because I know that there are members of our communities that are listening, every school has a budget meeting. And if those schools are not having budget meetings, that is then where we step in because we're very intentional about making sure that every school community is able to participate in what is important in those school communities, how resources should be allocated. And of course, principals are going to have to make some tough decisions because we're running out of ester funding, right? That COVID relief money. And so we're trying to figure out what are the priorities in every community, and then we bring all of those together, which then becomes the priorities for city schools. But those meetings are actually underway right now. So for members of the public that are listening, if your school has not had a community budget meeting and you don't know when it is, please reach out to your school so that they, that you become aware of when it is so that your voice can be heard in that way.
Thank you so much. The committee will take a vote. Do I have a motion to vote on Council Resolution 23-0164R? So moved by Bullock and Councilwoman Middleton, seconded by Councilman Torrance. Stokes says yes. Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Councilman Cohen is not here. Councilman Glover absent. Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Councilman Porter's absent. Councilman Torrance. The motion passed. The resolution was placed on second read at the next council meeting. And again, thank you guys, but I really think this is, could be a great partnership in terms of me as the chair don't always have to say, hey, come before the council. Now we are looking for y'all to say, hey, we want to come before the council and give you an update on what's happening at our schools. Thank you so much.